Just so you know, you're not audible on Zoom. Now you are.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Chief, Amber's homesick today. You want to give us an update on the COVID?
Sure. So Shelter Island in our total cases have gone up too in the in the past seven days. We're at now eighty-five cases on the Suffolk County map. With that said, the Suffolk County positivity has also increased just just marginally. I would say that from from early September, when it was four point eight five percent positivity, it's now at two point seven eight. And it probably was down at a low at two point three one. So in the last week, it's gone from two point three one to two point seven eight across the county. On the positive note, Supervisor, and I don't know how much you want to talk about the pod at this point. That was very successful. We vaccinated approximately five hundred and fifty fifty-eight people with a booster vaccine. Again, was well received by the community. My my only comment would be that it's impossible for the town to deliver a pod like that without the support of so many people in the community from the school, the hospital, the Lions Club, teachers, faculty, custodial staff, the police department, and all of our staff. So I, you know, I can't express my appreciation enough. The town's going to follow up in the near future with some thank yous out to those people that helped to make five pods now points of distribution for two rounds of COVID vaccine and now the booster vaccine, a success in the community. So for all those people that volunteered and assisted us, we can't thank you enough.
And just a quicker side to that is we started a discussion yesterday, and Dr. Dolge is going to follow up that we're hoping to get the hospital to come on a Saturday and give the booster shots to the kids. They're working on that to get that in place, and that will advertise for not only the school kids, but any other kids that go off island to school. Okay, Chief, as long as we have you on, it's not on the agenda, but we said we were going to talk about it. I know we're having an issue with some scams going on. If you want to, you know, enlighten us and maybe tell us how we can start addressing this on a semi-regular basis.
Yeah, if I could Supervisor, I'll lightly touch on it today, but if I could come back at another time. I had a meeting with somebody that very recently fell prey to fell prey to a scam and was took a substantial amount of money from her account. In fact, took her whole life savings. So I'm working with that victim, and we're going to try to meet with the reporter and maybe the Gazette in the near future to try to share directly her firsthand experience. And and our goal here really is is threefold right now. One is we have the criminal element that we're looking at, but quite frankly, it's very difficult to recover the money that's taken. The second part is an educational piece, and and this victim, after talking today, will most likely come forward and and discuss the circumstances of our case because she feels after this morning's discussion that if she can help one person to prevent what happened to her, it's a great success going forward. So and if we can help many be prevented from being defrauded by somebody else, that that's a that's a great help. And then the third thing is getting her some support from the community, which hopefully the Lions Club and some other other groups will will join in and trying to support to support that. So if I could hold off till next Tuesday to further discuss that, my my the best message I could give to the public right now would be one is if you have to give money to get money, it's a fraud. The second message would be, if you have any questions, stop, contact the police department or contact somebody close to you that you trust, and let a third party look at that to make sure that somebody's not trying to take your money in a fraudulent way. You know, the other part is that a lot of these organizations don't, you know, accept payment through iCards, gift cards, or any others any other method besides direct payment. So the messaging really for us as a police department is we want you to call us. Look, it's a simple phone call. We can take a look at what's being presented. We get a lot of these calls asking for some guidance. And and if you want, if you're uncomfortable coming to us, ask a family member, ask a friend, have a third party that you trust wholeheartedly that can take a look at what's going on. Because when you get caught up in these things Supervisor, you sometimes they get so caught up in it, they can't see the light at the end of the tunnel. And and it keeps going deeper and deeper into the the fraud. So we really want people to take a step back, ask somebody for help, whether it be the police or a friend, just to make sure that somebody's not trying to take money that's that's not rightfully theirs.
Thanks, Jim. So next week, we'll we'll talk a little more in depth about. And again, a lot of its outreach, just educating people this best week.
Yeah, and and that is the goal, to get people to recognize these things and and ask for help before they part with any of their money.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is the town code revisions. But before we do that, I have Ian McDonald and and Matt Sherman here. So let's let's do the wetlands application that we're going to, we had the hearing, we're going to act on it Friday. We had discussions about this last week. I know the planning board had some, I don't think he discussed this one in specific, more the concept. So we have any questions on this? This is the application for the pool. It's going to be like five feet within the setback area.
One question, a couple of questions, but one one in particular. What Ian, what is, how many bedrooms are in the house?
Can you come up, Ian?
The house has, I believe, three and the cottage one.
One bedroom or one room? How many rooms in the accessory structure?
For the health department, it has one bedroom.
But how many rooms are in the accessory?
It has two rooms, but the health department has one bedroom.
I realize that. We realize that. Um, what's in the finished basement?
Some gym equipment.
Just a gym that was, I know the basement was.
It's partially finished, and as then in the mechanic room, there's a laundry. It's a relatively small house.
What is the, I don't know if you can answer this, maybe Matt, what is the IA system that's going in?
Defer to Matt.
Oh, yeah, that would be for a four-bedroom system, yeah.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um, you know what, Jerry, I I think that with these wetlands applications, we should make the IA septic system part of the resolution. The installation part of the resolution.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Especially if you.
We've already been doing that.
Say it again, Bob.
We've already been adding the IA system as a requirement on the resolution.
You're talking about this specific. Albert's talking in.
Just moving forward, yeah, but definitely, you know, I think it's wise. And the other thing that would consider, I wouldn't want to do it at this late date, but I think with the wetlands applications, particularly with the new build or a big renovation, we should ask for the pressurized shallow drain field be part of the IA septic system.
Okay, Meg is the expert on on this. Basically, you want any comments on that?
Sometimes you can't fit a pressurized shallow drain field. They take up more space. So when a system's designed, it's really designed based on the property and what's best for that property. So there may be instances where pressurized shallow drain field is just not the best solution for that area because of the, you know, you may just not have enough space for the footprint. You know, if you have a larger house, it has more bedrooms, it needs a larger field, and sometimes it just won't fit. So to require it may not be the best option when there are chances that it it may not fit a space, especially with the setback requirements. So each design is very specific to the property.
And again, to go back a little bit to last night's discussion of the regulated area, each one is a case by case decision. You know, maybe we could put some wording in that, you know.
Obviously, if there's room.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But if it can be put in, we got, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sufficient space.
Right.
Yeah.
But can I see?
Sure.
It also would be depend on the characteristics of a property. If it's at elevation fifty or a hundred, it doesn't, a shallow rainfield doesn't have the same kind of efficiency or or purpose as if, but if it's in, you know, you know, right by the title wetlands at ten fifteen elevation fifteen, then that makes sense. But if it's got a lot of soil depth between that and the water table, maybe it doesn't make sense.
A pressurized shallow drain field will remove pharmaceuticals and other contaminants, Ian. Whether it's shallow or there's a lot of room, it does remove pharmaceuticals and other contaminants.
Okay, I don't see how it's different than a regular system other than because it really counts on the soil to do that. Load the system. The reason you go to shallow systems is for to gain more depth between the bottom of the system and the top of it. That's how I understand it. And Meg or Matt can chime in.
Matt? Or Meg?
Well, part of the reason why a pressurized shallow drain field works the way it does is because it's in the upper, you know, twenty-four inches of the soil that has the most active microbial layer. So it's very bacteria-rich, it's microbe-rich, and that's what really does a lot of the breaking down of the nitrates. Once you get down to a certain depth, you get the there, no bacteria live there. So there's no breaking down that happens. It has to be an anaerobic bacteria that does most of the work. But once you get to certain depths, the bacteria just doesn't live that deep. That's why the pressurized shallow drain field is shallow, because that's the active layer of soil. That's where most of the work happens.
Hey, Jerry.
Yes.
You can, you could add to the things that you didn't get is the shallow drain field is preferred where feasible, but not required, or language essentially like that.
So so we can put wording in again, words, you know, where it's. Yeah, yeah.
Opportunity.
Right, exactly. I agree with you.
Just a couple of questions. Matt, we we based on the CAC's seven findings, we now know that the pool is eight feet in the deep end. Did you submit details for the Bluestone stepping block installation that that's part of the application now?
Yeah, we that was part of what we presented during the hearing.
Okay.
The so that that has been provided to the town, yeah.
About the adding of the silt fence for the new Bluestone steps and the removal of the existing wood steps, that's in there as well, correct?
Yeah.
All right, submission up, we have the vegetation plan for the proposed vegetation for the fifteen-foot non-turf buffer, that's in there?
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing is submit a more detailed more detail on the retaining wall, like such as the materials they use for the puddings and the depth of that retaining wall. That is, to the best of my knowledge, also submitted in there, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I can put together one one cohesive drawing that has all that information on it so that when when you make your resolution, it can refer to that one specific drawing with a specific date. So everything's to there there in one one neat, you know, total package.
Okay, and that one comment about what's replacing the wood steps in the vegetated buffer, that's not being replaced, I think, right?
But plantings, it's a very shaded area, so we're going to have to we're going to have something that's very, you know, low sun, high shade, drought tolerant, native plantings in that area. We call that out on the plan, but we don't give a specific detail on it because that will that will be seen as they work with their landscape architect to design that area.
Now, this is actually referring to the wood steps that were in the vegetative buffer. They were removed, I would guess. What was replacing those wood steps?
He's saying that.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, the ones, the wood steps that are being removed are the ones that are on the far side of the property. And when those go out, then we'll be putting some plantings back in their place, yeah.
Okay. Right. So with that in mind, and you know, like some of Albert's considerations there in terms of making a part of the resolution, I like the fact that, you know, that we specify the number of bedrooms that the, you know, the IA system is accommodating. So this is for a four-bedroom, three in the house, one in the accessory building. And I think where where applicable and where desirable, the drain, this shallow drain field should be put in there. In terms of the moving the pool five feet closer to the house, I I just, you know, I can accept that. I mean, as far as that application is concerned, I think as long as those other six things are done, I'm comfortable with that application right now.
Okay. Matt, was there any discussion with the applicant about moving the pool back closer to the house?
We we discussed it with them very briefly. The we all feel we came to the the same conclusion we had when we were doing the design that we feel that the the distance away from the house is an appropriate distance. It's a safe distance. It meets the regulations and the requirements. So therefore, they want to keep it where it was designed to be.
Okay, all right. So we're going to act on that Friday. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, town code revisions. Bob's on on the road, but he's here with us through Zoom. We're going to hold off on Article sixteen. He asked to he wants to do a few more revisions on that, but we do have the septic revision that I think we're pretty much all in agreement that we can adapt that in the definitions unless there's any other last minute changes. I think we're good with that. Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, this was really just an opportunity for, we're definitely, yeah, take one last look at it. We're good to go.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. I mean, nothing major in municipal building, Bob. You had a thousand thousand square feet or larger in size. What, why the thousand square feet? I mean, the Wade's Beach Bath House, there's a couple of garages over at Dickerson Park. They're not a thousand square.
The reason for the definition call is for insurance purposes, and that's what that.
You know what?
If you drop it down, it's not. If you drop it to five hundred square feet, I think that's.
Why do we even need a square footage? He's breaking up.
I I don't know the the reason for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the actual reason that we have to have a square footage in there?
The square footage is for insurance purposes so that we didn't have to sort of, you know, sheds, things like that that aren't, but you know, considered, I mean, just buildings, to speak.
Not very good reception, Bob. We're having trouble hearing.
Basically, the it's for insurance purposes so that we didn't have to sort of really tiny little sheds and those things. But if you want to shrink it down, that's not necessarily a problem.
Basically, it was based on insurance, Bob, right? Go, shut up.
Albert, what would you recommend if we to to put any square footage in it?
Yeah, I just eliminate that. I mean, we know what's a municipal, it's owned by the town. I don't. It just seems limiting in some respects.
All right, that's fine, Albert.
Under, under noise, it just seems the last two words, reasonable standard. Judged by a reasonable standard, is this something that's going to carry over into a a noise ordinance? It should be more descriptive than what's written there, really.
That's actually what it is right now. That's what our standard is. Except for unless there's a, there's also there's a second section that tells decimals. But as a general matter, any noise where it has to, there, reasonable standard.
Could that be more descriptive at all, though, Bob? Decimal level, something, just to define it, other than reasonable?
We already have in the code. You wouldn't want to do that in a definition section.
It's in the code.
Okay, that's.
Put it in the definitions, it's in the actual code.
All right, okay. Down on the same page, basement or cellar? That portion of a building having its floor subgrade below ground level on all sides. What if a house is on a slope? I know this is something unique, well, relatively out of the ordinary, but the house, the house is on a slope. It has a walkout, could have sliders out, you know, the bit from the basement.
That's, when you see there's the building code definition, and the building code actually has formula.
All right, so it doesn't, it doesn't.
As to how much of it has.
All right, does it fall, it doesn't affect two-story, three-story, whatever, that? There's no.
You don't even get that specific in it.
Hey, I think Albert's concern is that when it's not a way to backdoor the third floor.
No, that's like I said, there's, that's well done, the building code, and it's by, and they've got a very specific formula for it.
Okay, all right, just. Residential property, finding residential property. Or two-family houses and property associated therewith, as well as residential cabins, multifamily condominiums, co-ops, and apartments. Should any kind of zoning be written into this? Any kind of zoning regs be associated with the description of residential property?
Now, you want to stay away from that in a definition, that should be, to the extent you're doing anything like that, it should be written into the zoning.
But if you're you're describing residential properties having condominiums, co-ops, or apartments, you don't need to have zoning in there? In this particular?
The name zone description of you're allowed to have X, Y, or Z. Now, this is just a temporary difference in residential and business commercial.
All right. Wastewater, water that is not stormwater, is contaminated with pollutants and is or will be discarded. Do we need to define how it's discarded or put in, in what manner?
No, I just, on this, I just took the DEC definition.
All right, you know where I'm where I'm going with these, Bob. What kind of ramifications are there to the definitions if things aren't descriptive? And the last one is yard sale. We really be going down this road again with the yard sale? We have to go there?
We absolutely, we absolutely do. I mean, there are other ones considered illegal.
What's that?
If we don't actually specifically authorize it, it is considered illegal. Technically, we, technically, we're under our code right now. It's not legal to have a yard sale. Nobody.
First, the first sentence, a temporary and occasional display and sale to the public of new previously owned or used items. All right, I don't. We need to go there?
It's meant to be somewhat open, but again, that's up to you guys to choose not to. But honestly, if there's ever anything brought up about, we'll have a yard sales and there'd be no authorization for it in the code, I think that's a problem.
Really, you know, we're just defining it. We're not regulating.
Right.
Him?
Personally, personally, would like to see the definition remain. Again, when it comes to enforcement or or that's a whole other set of things, but I think we should have defined basically what a yard sale is and all the other, you know, lawn sale, attic sale, tag sale, rummage sale, garage sale, all those other terms that apply to yard sale. I I see nothing wrong with defining the term in the town in the town code. Again, what we decide to do with that down the future, that's for the next board to decide on on how we want to handle that, should that become an issue. This doesn't prevent, by the way, it doesn't prevent, by the way, anybody from putting up a boat or a trailer or something or a car on your lawn and selling it. It's a one or two items if you want to sell that. People have put a piece of furniture or something on the front lawn and want to sell that, that's not a yard sale. But it's it's always temporary.
One thing I tried to do with this round of definitions is take anything out of the definition that might be part of a code, those should be separately included in the code, and the definitions really should just be definitions. You know, we shouldn't get too deep into the policy. That's really part of the reason for all of this.
Yeah, I think if we're going to come up with, you know, with policy and you're going to go to enforcement, Albert's point about defining what the words temporary and occasional must be taken into consideration if you decide to go that way. But the new town.
That's that's exactly right. That's exactly right, Jim. That's why it's it's not the way it is. Because that would be something you could specify before it told.
Right.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Yeah, good. Okay, all right, Bob. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the community block grant development. We have the hearing this Friday. Again, just to remind everybody, that money is going to be allocated along with the money from this year's community block grant to finish the work at the Legion Hall, the handicap access, the front entrance, the overhang roof, and and the other.
And the new doorway.
Doorway, any other needs over there that we can address. And then going forward, I know Jim, you want to talk about, we're going to be looking.
Yeah, so when, so in the future, when we apply for these block grants, if you take a look at our neighboring East End communities, they don't apply for fifteen, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar grant. They apply for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's kind of money that we're going to kind of need as we attack those two buildings to our north, namely Police Headquarters and Justice Hall, if we're going to eventually make them somewhat ADA compliant. The first thing obviously is to have an ADA plan in place. Once the plan is in place, doesn't mean you have to execute the plan overnight. You know, to do that would cost the taxpayer just way, way too much money unless you could fund it. But it would be, those costs would be spread out over a period of time, maybe a five to ten-year period of time, where you would try to take a look at all the needs, not just the physical needs, but in a place where, you know, hearing is a problem or visual sight is a problem, you might be able to take, attack some of those other things. So those buildings were all built, I believe, in the late nineteen, mid, late nineteen thirties. So they're approaching, you know, eighty-five to ninety years of age. So they they really need to be, you know, they really need to be looked at. We have no plans on building a new police headquarters and no plans of building a new justice court. But in fairness, for people that are severely handicapped, they have to have access into those buildings. We can't behold in trials here in town, but we have around on a front lawn someplace. So as it, all municipal buildings that have access by the public should have some type of ADA considerations in their design. So that's what we'll be working on for, you know, in our capital plan over the course of the next half to full decade.
Right. Okay. Okay, so we'll have that hearing on Friday also.
We already have the hearing.
Oh, we'll act on it. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else we're going to act on that we need to?
I don't think so, Jerry.
Anything significant?
The budget, you're going to act on?
Budget we're going to act on, yeah.
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 We have a problem.
That's it.
Okay, it's kind of a short agenda today. We'll go around the room, I'll start. I was hoping Reed Karen could be here, but apparently there's a stomach virus going around, and he's got it too. We, I got a copy, a C C the letter from the Building Department regarding the old dentist office over here, next to the firehouse, and it's B one zone. It's professional use, and there was discussion in the Building Department, that they have to come for a special permit. When they were issued a building permit, it's going to be another professional, it's an allowed use in B one. I think it's a construction office, you know, contractor's office space. So the question was, shouldn't they have come before us for a special permit? And the Building Department's feeling was that it's not, it's really not a change of use, it's, it's a professional service that's already allowed, you know, under code. The intent of, the current intent of B one zone is the municipal look of the, of the section of the B one zone, to keep it a campus-like atmosphere. So it's already there, it's already, you know, not changing any of the look of the building. So I think, I just want to give you the heads up, because we'll talk about that next week. The question did come up, but. Okay, she has some. Okay.
Go to Albert.
And I think that's all I had. Albert, you have anything?
The W Q I met, and they discussed a couple of pending applications, but they approved one in Silver Beach for Gove, has a block pool system that's replaced, it scored sixty points on the criteria. Put them out, and they passed it unanimously for, for grant funding. That's all.
Okay, and last night, I sat in on the planning board meeting, it was more of a work session than a, it wasn't a one of hearings, it was a work session. And there was some interesting discussion on some of the applicants. And then they started a discussion that we started last week on the regulated area, another seventy-five to hundred-foot section, and there was a lot of different thoughts on it, but I think that, you know, they started a discussion and they're going to continue it, so it was, it was a good meeting. The other thing I have is Joe Fenora and I are meeting Friday with the school to go over the engineering report for the center here for the sewer district. Talk about some options there going forward. We're ready to, you know, well, we're almost ready to start a, the next phase of that, that grant is doing the actual planning, but we want to see, you know, where the school stands on it. The school already made commitments to get started on their own, but we think this plan might work out better for everybody in the long run. So next week, I can give you a better report on that. And I think that's all I have. Jim?
Yeah, the good news is on, on the post-compliance report, our numbers are reversed. So last year at this time, we had about one-third versus two-thirds, non-compliant to compliant. And now the numbers are reversed. So the number of properties that we have on Shelter Island that are renting is a hundred and fifty-four. Ninety-four, the one fifty-four, are now fully compliant, which represents sixty-two point two percent, not to a hundred, but we're moving in the right direction. Fifty-seven are non-compliant, which represents thirty-seven point eight percent. We're working on those as we speak. So I would like to think that in our future reports, and I think they probably should come in and give us a little overall on how this is going, especially if the new town board gets involved here. I think that would be appropriate. So that's good news. During committee met, I didn't report on that. So far, in the month of October, well, mid-November now, we've taken thirty, only thirty-four deer by nineteen hunters, but, you know, the numbers are down. Last year, we took forty-one in October. So we're down seven deer. But we're up six hunters. We had nineteen hunters out hunting in October. Last year, we only had thirteen hunters out. Twenty-two were taken from the ten, ten town management properties. Last year, thirty were taken from the nine properties. We've had two raffles, one eligible entry. Coal storage butchering. Twenty-two deer have been stored this year compared to twenty-nine deer stored in there last year, just in October. Nine deer have been for personal use this year, but eighteen were for personal use last year. So eighteen of the twenty-nine deer, which is a little less than two-thirds, were used for personal reasons. This year, it's much less than that. They've donated a lot more venison, and it's been, been taken. So far to date, last year, we had a hundred pounds in October. This year, we had two hundred and seventy pounds of venison in our cooler, you know, in our, our town, at the town, town recycling center. Tick drags, they're, we're done, they're finished. We'll get a discussion on them at our December meeting. So we haven't met in a couple of months because we just thought we didn't have to meet every month. We didn't meet in October, November to concentrate on the hunting season and get going. The flyover is definitely tentatively scheduled for the end of January, which is basically when we did it last year. The new topic is this E H D. Epizootic hemorrhagic disease. The first confirmed case was found here October twenty-first of last month. Additional cases are suspected. They have coordinated with the D E C to track the disease. There's no risk to people, and there's no risk to pets. E D H is a virus typically that is fatal to deer. It's transmitted by biting midgets, small insects sometimes called noseams. The disease is not spread from deer to deer, and humans cannot be infected by the deer or the tick bites, or the bites from the noseams. E D H virus was first confirmed in New York State in two thousand and seven, in the western part, and in Albany, Niagara, Rockland Counties. It came down in two thousand and eleven. So it's kind of worked its way to Albany, down the Hudson Valley, and now out on Long Island. Once infected, the E H D, by the way, it's estimated that fifteen, it's resulted in fifteen hundred deer mortalities. Once infected, the E D H virus deer usually die within thirty-six months, so thirty-six hours. So it's very, very quick. E D H outbreaks are very common in late summer and early fall when the midgets are abundant, although initial cases have been detected here in early July. Signs of E D H virus include fever, hemorrhage in muscles and organs, swelling in the head, neck, tongue, and lips. The deer infected with E H D may appear lame or dehydrated. Frequently infected deer seek out water sources because they're dehydrated. So we're finding their carcasses right at the edge of the water, which I've seen a couple of them at the edge of the water. I thought maybe they died swimming over, but maybe not, you know, maybe not. There is no current treatment or means to prevent E H D. E H D is endemic, was once endemic, just to southern states, that's been now carried north. So that's a little bit about the, the virus itself.
Hey, Jim, can we figure out a way to promote the venison program more town-wide? I know there's a certain core of people that use it, but it'd be nice if we opened it up to more people.
Okay, all right. Well, the newspapers are here, and the best way is either through the Gazette or through their reporter. People that use the website, we do post this once in a while on a, on a website, but I will talk to Bo about trying to get the word out on our website. And if the papers can try to just let you, let you know that, and all that meat is cut, and it's all prepackaged, and it's all labeled. And you can find it right behind the recycling center equipment in a freezer in the back. It's very, very, and you just open up the freezer and you can take it. We ask people not to stockpile venison. If you go in there, take a piece or two, this is meat that's being shared across the island. But the other thing is, I think Bo has tried on occasion to work with some groups of people. Let me check on that, because that might not be a bad thing that we check on to see that it's getting in the right hands of the people. And the last report I have is on the capital planning. The wastewater, feasibility studies, the one at the Heights, the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation Treatment Plant. The town in the Heights have a collective goal of protecting the existing drinking wells on or near the golf course. So this is a new stumbling block, you know, that's come before us. And I'm going to discuss it with the town board further with Joe, with you guys. That we've talked about locating the leaching fields elsewhere other than in the Heights, and continuing with the irrigation goal by itself. That's a third alternative. We looked at a third thing and said, like they did it, Riverhead Indian Island model. Where we would forego recharging of the aquifer, but we would still irrigate the golf course, but on a need basis only, only during the dry month. We wouldn't be, wouldn't be set on a pre-timer. And the fourth one is the other option that the town has raised about the potential of hooking up with Bridge Street and foregoing options two and three, the irrigation and the recharge. Because of the potential to the wells that are servicing not just the Heights water, but Westneck water as well. So it's kind of a touchy thing. It's also a sixty-five thousand dollar study.
Right.
We already paid for a study. It would, it would have to, then the Health Department is telling us we have to do it. involves ground flow water modeling. Fresh Pond, the report is being put together as we speak. Joe is prepared to come in and probably brief the town board in a presentation and discussion in January twenty twenty-two with the new town board. Municipal wastewater treatment study. That is being finalized also. That didn't take us long, because there wasn't as much data to have to be collected. But that report should be made available to this, I think you have a preliminary coming up from Joe in the, in the coming month, and probably by January twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, the entire town board would have that report. Real Point, I sent you the pictures, significant, significant erosion out at Real Point, especially along the eastern shoreline. We are scheduled to have a, once again, it's a yearly, done on a yearly basis now that you have to, because all that sand just gets pushed right down into the mouth of Cockles Harbor. You could not navigate safely in and out of that harbor unless it was dredged. I do not know whether Suffolk County is preparing for a hydraulic dredge or for a mechanical dredge. Last couple of times, it's been mechanical, where we just go out with a long arm and reach in, pile it up, and then take payloads and bring it down to beach on the north end of the beach. The other dredgings, just for people to know it, the mouth of Westneck Harbor will be dredged. That's the point off of Shell Beach. We are trying to work with Brian to get the, when we do that dredge, if it is a mechanical or a hydraulic dredge, to get the materials to the western part of Shell Beach rather than put it just at the tip. You put it at the tip, it's just a short distance into the mouth. The other thing that's being dredged is Dickerson Creek. So Dickerson Creek needs it, you know, pretty badly, so that's another one that's going to be dredged. Crest Beach Bathroom, the big obstacle there is we have to, according to our grant, we have to make sure that we meet the requirements set forth in the M W B E requirement, otherwise you end up losing twenty percent of your grant, which we cannot afford to lose. So the firm that we're dealing with, the buying the, the trailer, is not qualified.
Want to explain what that is?
That, that's the women's.
Minorities.
And minorities, yes. Minority of women's businesses, yes. So you have to, you have to, you have to, you have to be, twenty percent of the project has to be represented by, be certified by the M W B requirement. So we're hoping that the, once we put in the concrete slab or the foundation, that we can get that, that requirement fulfilled in that regard. The update of the multi-year capital plan continues to move forward between Jen, Joe, and Amber. It's a work in progress. Joe has completed most of all the marine assets. We're now working on the town assets. Recycling roof, if anybody's been to the recycling center, there's been daily progress there. I'd like to thank Ron Anderson, Nikki Ryan from Public Works, Ron Jernick, and Wesley Condon from the Recycling Center for their work that they've done. It is progressing very, very nicely. Corzini asphalt is going to come in and pave around the twelve upright columns and the parking lot. The roof will be the last phase of construction on the project. Solar panels for the roof has not been, you know, pursued financially. So although it was a goal for us to put a roof on that and protect our equipment, we would like to run that equipment with solar panels. So I think the town board has to, we have to get a hold of Jen and create options and see if we can pursue that a little further and get some money for those, for the paneling, for that, for that, satisfy that.
That was the wish.
That was the wish, but.
That was the plan.
That is the plan. And it should come to fruition, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. It just won't happen all at once. And just the reason I'm putting it out there is just don't expect the roof to be put up there and the solar panels to go right on top. It's going to take a little while. Dawn Lane Bulkhead is completed. Crowley did an excellent job, even with the staircase going down there. That area's all been taken care of. The only thing down there, the guardrail, I think, had to be added at the end of Dawn Lane that was removed for construction. Shelter Island Community Center, we talked about, we have, Brian sent out five bids, only has one bid returned as of two weeks ago, so we're hoping that new estimates come in, because that will help us in terms of awarding that bid. In terms of new business, four road paving projects, we are prepared. Now, we've used CHIPS money, and with the CHIPS money that we get from New York State, based on the taxes we pay on our gasoline, we've completed Great Circle, at least half of it, in both Eastview and Westview. We are also considering doing additional paving at South Ferry Hills and at the recycling center, as I mentioned before. Brian is still on, working with Assemblymen Thiel on the hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar paving grant, that they're trying to get additional funding, which would be needed to raise Ram Island Drive one foot. That is a total cost of five hundred and eighty-five thousand. But we, we need rent monies for that. Future block applications, we discussed. And other. Jared, have you got back? One of the concerns, I guess, from, you had sent out to the department chairman and heads about thinking five years down the road with capital plans. Oh, you're getting some feedback from them?
See, well, we have feedback from the Police Department and the Highway at Public Works, and we budgeted money for to start those next year, we put money in.
Complete.
And then we.
And highway.
Projected, at least we put in fifty thousand capital planning.
Okay.
Not sure what we put in for Public Works, then we projected, you know, the future years.
Okay.
And we marked it, whether it was going to be from, you know, actual tax money or grants.
Okay.
I'll go over them.
And the last thing, and I won't go into all the details on this, but Jen Maciano Hingham, not only does she help us write the grant, she monitors the grant. So we, I just want you, taxpayers, to know that we ended up getting fifteen thousand dollars back on our rebate, seven thousand five hundred for Police Department, and seven thousand five hundred from the Building Department for our electric vehicles. She also got back ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the New York State D E C Household Hazardous Waste Program. She also got back. Well, we sent to the quarterly progress report for the New York State Municipal Food Scraps Reduction and food donation and scrap, and food scraps recycling. That's thirty thousand fifty-six dollars. We're being, we're putting in for reimbursement request for the number one in process. We're on a waitlist, as you know, we've got the money back from the grinder, we're on a waitlist for the excavator. That means a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars back to the town. We're on a waitlist for the roof of the recycling center, which means that's forty-nine thousand dollars back to the town. So as soon as we finish those up, get our bills together, we can put those in, they'll go on a waitlist, we can anticipate getting those in twenty-two, twenty-three funding year. And that's, and there's a couple of other things that she's put in for, New York State D E C hazardous waste, sixteen thousand, New York State D E C household hazardous waste, fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and New York State D E C solid waste recycling, the twenty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. There's no way in heck that somebody stays on top of all these grants, unless we have a part-time grant, right? That's the reason I bring it up. It's a, it's a yeoman's job just staying on top of all these, all the paperwork that goes in on submitting these grants. That's, that's it.
When the meeting's over, I have papers to sign, I have to be in today, there's a deadline.
Yes.
For the hazard mitigation for both the very terminals. She she's a she's a godsend. Okay. Joe, you have anything? For this?
No.
Okay, Daddy, anything else Friday?
I don't think so.
I think we're in good shape.
I have a very short agenda, Jim.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, okay. BJ, you got anything for us? Okay, Julie, Julia or anything? Or Ambrose, I'm sorry. I see Margaret, Meg's, you're raising your hand. What do you got, Meg?
Um, it just, it was brought to my attention that the lights at the basketball court aren't on a timer anymore or the timer broke. So they're on all night long and they're really bright. Is there some way we can fix that?
I'll call Brian as soon as we're done. Yep.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Meg. That's good to know. Would like to thank everybody and particularly Kim Riley and the Recreation Department for putting together Saturday's program that honored Garth Griffin. Definitely was well, well-attended, very much appreciated by the family. It could not have been a nicer event. I just thank everybody, from the supervisor to the superintendent, all the guest speakers, Walter Richards, Peter Medema. They all did a spectacular job getting up there and the people in the audience. It's great, great, great tribute to Garth. And we'd like to remind everybody, if not doing anything at ten o'clock tomorrow on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, Veterans Day, that's Armistice Day, but we we celebrate at ten o'clock or a little hour early. But we'll have a short ceremony, probably be about twenty-five minutes in front of the Community Center tomorrow, run by the American Legion Post two eighty-one and its commander Clark. Should be a, you know, it's it's a nice honor, and I think the veterans greatly, greatly appreciate the fact that people come out to this. And if you see the work that's been done down the center of the island with all the names, that you could see the signs have probably doubled in the last year, and they continue to grow. This is an island of service, and there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of people that have served in the military here in past and present. I think we have as many as twenty people on, you know, on duty right now, either in the National Guard Reserve or on active duty, which is a real nice thing for Shelter Island. So on behalf of Commander Clark, we welcome everybody tomorrow at ten o'clock. We appreciate it immensely. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for us? Okay, I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session. I have to talk about a contractual matter and also a litigation matter. Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.